You have any additional items? I have none, okay. Move on down to the consent agenda and the motion.
We have a town council meeting in minutes for March twenty-second and finances for February month. My employee reports and town manager.
That's next.
Okay, uh, I will re-approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Motion made in seconds, up in favor?
Alright.
Alright, nice.
Okay. Move on down to employee reports, um, Michelle, you wanna start?
Sure, um, we are knee-deep in both budget and water this month. Um, and everything is moving forward nicely. Um, I did talk to Larry Holsgate at Business Oregon, and our application has gone and been approved through the DEQ, OHA, um, BPA. Um, Larry has finished his staff recommendation and it is now sitting in his, uh, peer review and his boss's office for signatures. So we can anticipate as, um, what Larry was saying is that the contract should be coming to us in two weeks. Um, other than that, we are, I'm just, uh, in the middle of budget and trying to get, uh, ordinances and resolutions updated by far.
Jay? Uh, nine-one-one, you guys have the report in your packets? It shows here, year-to-date, thirty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-five calls. A lot of calls.
I have a question regarding this, okay? And I just need some clarification and I wish that Scott was here to make the report. And that in, under radios, it says there were six thousand three hundred and twenty-seven calls. But when you look at the CAD report, it says the total events were one thousand three hundred and one. So when they count radio calls, are they counting each time someone answers back?
Yeah.
So it's kind of like, we don't really have six thousand incidents going on.
No.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to clarify, but it's not incidents, it's.
We have thirteen hundred and four.
Right, okay.
Okay, tell what they've been doing.
And so every time, like on a non-emergency call, I say hi, you say hi, that's one. Okay, how you doing, that's two, kind of thing?
Yeah, it trains, it, it, it.
Okay, well, but when people see that, I don't think they're realizing that.
Right.
Okay. They're counting calls or conversations instead of incidents.
You pay fire, ministry, anything to add to your report?
Nothing further, just glad to be back at work.
Okay. How's it works?
Hi, I'd just like to introduce Troy Miller. He's, uh, gonna be stepping in, uh, to take my place. Uh, you guys know I'm headed out the door in the next few months, so Troy stepped in and, uh, he and the team did a great job so far. Uh, a lot of stuff to learn, but he's catching on fast. And he wrote the report today and I told him if he wanted to change the format of that, that would be his discretion. If you guys want anything different in that, it'd be a good time to, to mention to him that if you'd like different types of information or anything. We just normally, you know, put the general amount of water we use and, uh, a little note about most of our calls. Pretty much repetition, but, uh, you know, if anything else you guys would like to add into that, he has a, a box in there now. So put stuff in there if you wanna make suggestions for his monthly report. Welcome aboard, Troy.
Table two, two special projects, Scott?
Uh, worked a little bit on splash pad. Um, I spent on the website quite a bit. We've got the thirty percent drawings, we've got the drawings and schematics from the supplier for the splash pad. Hopefully having the full drawings in the next week or two so we can get that up to bid. I spent these last two days up at GeoTherom along with Jeff and Troy, uh, picking the pipe, which basically means cleaning the pipe from, uh, the prison all the way down to our station, our pub station, we've got some issues there, been doing it since I've been here in October. Hopefully this will take care of it, fix it. Um, we're back online right now, we're heating water so we can get back into the prison. There's a water meeting on the nineteenth, I hope all of you guys will be there. Should be able to answer all your questions, five o'clock on the nineteenth here. Uh, we will have the engineering group that is doing the design and overseeing the build of that. Uh, Amber Esposito will also be here, she is a scientist that has done all the water samples at the source, meaning at the wellheads, she's done all our samples there. She's gonna do a full report on exactly what's in her water and how things will change as water comes around. So that, that special meeting, the reason why it was called a special meeting is because council interviewed her and we have a forum, so we have to call a special meeting. But it's primarily gonna go over the schedule of the water plant, uh, build, and our water sample results, uh, results and what's in our water. That's pretty much where I'm going on to.
Okay, thanks. Move on down. Uh, town manager, the county twenty-two budget officer, county?
So, I'd like to, you know, if I just budget officer, the county budget or overall, everything?
Pretty much overall everything, yeah. It's what the town manager has been from years.
Okay.
Overseas the whole budget, possibly.
Okay, oh, well, which is, okay, that's right there, I can understand. I think, um, one of the things that I would like to see happen is that there's public comment after each individual thing so that I have a better understanding, I am new at this, and so I would like to hear other people's opinion about it. I would agree with that.
Hey, anybody have any?
Um, I'd make a motion that we, um, accept Michelle Perry as the twenty-twenty-two budget officer for the town. I'll second.
Motion made in seconds, up in favor?
Alright.
Aye. Hey, move on down. Ben, you're up, you're up.
I'm here to request a speed limit sign on North H Street between Center and North Second. Um, I live two blocks that way, just down the hill where Bullard Creek comes back up. And, um, between North Second and, um, Center Street on H, there are very few people who park curbside, so it's like a four-lane highway. And we've had people pass on our right driving down H Street. And, I mean, because it looks like a four-lane road. And, uh, um, people, most people are good. Um, there are a few who are not. But we're a real high pedestrian area because we have a lot of multi-housing units in the area. We've got the Dollar General store just down the street, which is the main shopping center for a lot of people on the south end of town who don't drive. And with the Dollar General, the, well, the new Dollar Store, Dollar, Dollar Thirty-Nine Cent Store coming in with the foot traffic will increase. We're also kind of a historical home area. Um, and we get a lot of visitors to that little stretch of the street, um, at, you know, they hit the post office and the senior center and they go around. And so we get a lot of visitors there, but we get a lot, there's a lot of elderly people, there's a lot of disabled people, and tons and tons of kids, there's skateboards, horses, you name it. But, um, the busiest traffic, uh, vehicle traffic is at eight o'clock in the morning. And it's, people are late getting their kids to school, we're one block from the school. There is a twenty mile an hour speed sign one block down when children are present. But there's nothing. And people will, uh, they'll turn off the highway, they'll go barreling down Center Street, make a sharp U-turn on North H and come back around the senior center and they'll go, you know, they'll just wave kitty corner. And then where, uh, North First down here, uh, tees with North, uh, with H Street, uh, where GBS just now lives, um, people, uh, there's no crop, there's no painted lines, there's no crosswalk, there's no, um, indication as to which side of the road you should be on. So people will, you know, cut corners there too. A lot of people will stop at, um, at the end of First Street before it hits H. Many people stop, it just feels natural to them. And then the next guy won't, so the first guy gets rear-ended almost. Uh, but, um, I think it would be nice, besides having a speed limit sign on that street, uh, to do some kind of indication that this is the, you know, pause here for just a second and stop and look.
There's no stop sign?
There's no stop sign, it feels like there should be, you know?
I think the answer would be a stop sign there, a stop bar.
Yeah, it, it would be great.
Yeah.
Um, most people just stop naturally. You don't, you know, because you don't know where you are, you're gonna run into the creek.
As far as coming from the north and the south, they only have one block to get their speed up, you know?
But they can do it. And the thing with it is, is that little stretch there is two blocks off of Highway three ninety-five and, and two blocks off of one forty. So we're kind of a substitute highway. And, um, and so they come off the high, it's like they do all over, they come off the highway going as fast as they can. Uh, but, uh, yeah, eight o'clock in the morning's the worst and, um, but there's no indication that they need to slow down. It is commercial or business area on this side of H Street and that residential on the other. So, anyway, that's my request. That's all, that's all.
What, what cor, what cross street again? H and Center?
Um, right down from the dentist's office. Uh, right, which is First.
First.
Where that ends into. Yeah, right here, right down here. If you step out here and you look down there.
Yeah, okay.
Right down there.
Thanks.
And, um.
Our Chuck Kelly, what used to be Chuck.
Yeah, Chuck Kelly's old place and, um, the dentist's office is there and Aspen Court. There, I understand that there is going to be an apartment put in the bottom of, uh, that old house on the corner next to the examiner, so that'll be another family living in the neighborhood.
That's the first I've heard of it.
Oops. Maybe it's, maybe it's still in the planning stages. Pre-planning stages. I was asking Junior Gabriel about the age of that house. Um, because there's, there's some rumors going around that maybe there was gonna be a historic home tour during the big, uh, the United States two-hundred-and-fifty anniversary. And then I wanted to know how old that house was, and he said, oh, by the way, we're putting, and he said, there's already a bathroom down there. Unless I've got the wrong house.
Is that the old Debo's house?
It's the one right by the examiner. Uh, so downhill from the examiner. Uh, kitty corner from the, uh, uh, affordable housing place.
That's the old Debo's house.
Debo?
Debo's.
Oh, Debo's?
Linda Debo's.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that, wow. Oh, that's cool. So anyway.
Okay, can I have a look, anybody wanna look into that? Troy?
Thank you.
Thank you. Stop sign would be good.
Yeah, that's, I think that would be.
Permission.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on down, ordinance eighty-seven. One that related to dog people.
I, I just had one question on the dog needs, um, for the dog kennel and then that they can't be within a half, um, it's four point three. Okay, that they can't be within a half a mile of the town of Lakeview. Does that correspond with what the kennel he has in theirs and that's how we're able to say it? Okay.
Absolutely.
I was just trying to figure out how we were.
We traded up to, uh, in the counties as much as we could during the ordinance.
Okay, so it all pretty much matches that way, yeah, so there.
Well, I, I had a, um, um, comment, I guess, about, I paid one, number three, animal control authority. Um, the animal control authority is that person appointed by the town council, the county council. But our bylaws and everything says that that job is city manager's job. And I, I think what we've done with most of these things is have a committee to do interviews, you know, for that. So I don't know if we can just eliminate that or.
Change. It's up to your discretion. I don't know, what does the council think?
Change it to, uh, the town manager?
No, what? I love it, I can't wait. Well, it.
Well, actually, you know what?
Yeah, make her the town's dog catcher.
Just let it catch.
Uh, is that person appointed, I just thought, like, council?
It, it's.
Sure.
It's a good, I don't. It's a great question, I, I'm, I'm happy to do it. Um, or I could appoint somebody to make sense. But.
But you're the employee kind of sort. So.
But isn't somebody that we would have to approve anyway?
We, we, it's for now.
I mean, it just goes to council to approve who that person might be, which we could say is the manager or whoever else, so.
So. I'm outnumbered, I'm outnumbered.
No, no, it, what do you, what do you want?
No, that's not what I want, I already said that I want. I guess I'm just reading that it's appointed by the town council and I'm assuming that's the town manager who brings that person forward to be present, I don't, but maybe.
Well, no, the council does not need to approve.
Oh, okay, okay. Be the bylaws.
I think that's been in there before.
Well, maybe it has, but, you know. I didn't start it. You want me to ask you the town manager?
Yeah, is a person appointed by the town manager. And I don't think we need to change anything else except make that correction in our motion.
Okay.
I have a question. Is it okay to ask a question, Ms. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah. Did anybody talk to Rhonda Dial about this ordinance and the impact it might have on her operations? She's the one who seems to most of us to be the.
I don't know, have you just?
I think that a person who is doing this has to go to school and be appointed and, um, if she should apply, then.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean about being the dog control officer. What I was interested in was whether or not the, you know, some of the language that's in the ordinance might impact what she does at Animal House. For example, if there's a maximum number of animals that you can have in a home, I think it's four, right?
Four dogs.
Yeah, dogs. Um, and she has, you know, and she collects dogs that are, you know, that are missing, they're homeless or something, and she's got more than four, then she's in violation and she might be subject to a finer penalty and is that a kennel and that sort of thing. So I just, I, I just wanna make sure that, you know, welcome as the ordinance is, we don't impact the only person in town who seems to be spending most of her time looking after dogs.
I don't know, and maybe I, you know, in reading her posts and that type of thing, I believe that she fosters most of the dogs out that she finds. And so they really aren't at her house and I've never seen, I think, the most of, two dogs at one time at her house in the yard.
I'm not complaining, I don't, but I just, I want, you know, she's committed to this and I wanna make sure that she doesn't feel like this is a negative impact or some kind of judgment on her operations, if it's not meant to be.
Yeah, she has, I think a lot of it goes along with what she believes, you know, and how things should be handled and that. And a, a kennel to me is someone who is raising dogs and selling them.
Commercially.
You know, commercially, it's not.
I see, for, for.
Boarding them all the time, yeah.
But a rescue operation is also like a kennel. And that's what she does, she does a rescue operation and she houses those animals until somebody adopts them. That's, that's the same as a kennel. And, um, and I have another question about dangerous dogs. As you all have seen, um, she's got signs on the front of her fence now, say, five of them, saying beware, you know, beware of the dog. And this is right on Main Street and it's right next to the theater where little kids are going to be walking for the ballet recital, the dance recital. And I don't know, I mean, I know that she's the one who takes care of animals, but is she gonna be in violation by having a dangerous dog in, in town, in the, within the city limits?
I think the way I understood this before, or it's posted, that she's not liable for the fact that she's already posted it, but I'm not sure.
No, that's not true.
You would have to.
It may, it may literally reduce her liability because she can make the argument that you were warned. But if your animal attacked someone, your animal attacked someone and you're liable.
It all depends on whether the kid sticks his hand over the fence or what.
Doesn't necessarily know.
The fence is quite liable right now, but, you know.
Because it's anticipated that a kid will stick his hand over the fence, that, that's, that's the problem, you can't.
So what exactly are you trying to say about this?
Pardon?
What are you trying to say about this?
I'm trying to say, is that included in the, in the, in your statute that, that dangerous animals are not within the, are not allowed within the city limits?
I, I don't believe that dangerous dogs are supposed to be allowed, the only thing, only exception was made for watchdogs, I think from reading ordinances. So, if there's a dangerous dog that's a threat to people, then that's not gonna be allowed.
And I don't.
If it growls at people, like if it's at large, not if it's in their yard, obviously, but if it's out running around and tries to bite somebody or goes after livestock, then that's considered a dangerous dog or a nuisance dog.
Have you banned certain breeds?
Nope.
No.
Counsel, there's a question online from Ashley, she's saying, would the dog ordinance affect the vet's office? Her question is, would the dog ordinance affect the vet's office?
Which is a kennel.
Yeah.
No.
They're on the city limits.
Are they, it's half a mile, but it says half a mile.
They're in.
And the ordinance says within a half a mile of the town, right?
Yeah, then they're, then they're.
They are in the city, though.
They are in the city limits and certainly within a half a mile, so, and they are a kennel.
It shouldn't affect the vet's office or, um, a medical facility. And they have to house them when they work on them and stuff.
But it's, it's also a boarding kennel, right?
But they board dogs.
No.
They do board dogs.
Yeah, it's a commercial boarding kennel.
But they're not, are they licensed as a commercial boarding kennel or are they licensed as a vet?
I, I know, a few years back, um, uh, Shirley Jo McAdoo was looking at boarding dogs and, I don't know, it was, uh, some kind of, uh, pet stay, like VK, and, uh, um, she was trying to get some licenses, she asked for the approval of, uh, the, uh, Lakeview Hospital and they wouldn't recommend her place, uh, because it felt like it wasn't up to standards or wasn't up to snuff, so. It was like a, uh, like an Airbnb for dogs or something like that, but she's.
Doggy daycare, doggy daycare kind of thing.
Yeah, and, uh, they, they wouldn't, um, they wouldn't endorse her, so, um, you know, for whatever reason, probably because she didn't have fences. But at that time, yeah, we found out that they definitely were a commercial boarding place as a separate business from their veterinary business.
So they're probably, they're licensed with the state, so they're already licensed. And so it talks about that there, but then they're talking about, all the other exclusions are households, not a commercial. In the ordinance, for the dog kennel.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I think it's, they're talking about households specifically, not.
Not, not the commercial, the first one, an establishment or premises within Lake County more than a half mile, but always saying more than a half mile from the town of Lakeview, or Lakeview City Limits. That is licensed.
How far is the vet clinic away from the city?
They're in the city limits. Yeah, they're in the city.
Yeah, they did annex.
I bet they have a killing license, though.
Right. But our ordinance says that it has to be more than a half a mile, well, from the town of Lakeview or the Lakeview City Limits of an incorporated town or city, I think the county limits.
So people out at the fairgrounds visiting, if they have dogs running up, does that mean that they are on county property and it doesn't matter or what?
The county ordinance would apply.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, because that, that is not, yeah, like, in, like, in town, considered in town. I guess I myself, I had not, did not believe that this would affect Rhonda in any way. In fact, I thought it would probably help her more, you know, with the nuisance order, you know, that, because she's the one who's posting about the dangerous dogs and posting about, you know, the different things and keep your dog, you know, confined. So I just thought it was, would be helping her, but.
Why don't we just table this until, uh, we talk to the vet clinic and, uh, you know, ask them about it and we can talk to Rhonda about it and put it off in the six months and see what happens. We'll see, how's that sound?
I wanna, I wanna get this done because we've been, the cops have had, uh, maced one of them. And I know there's been a couple of times that, the couple of deputies that went to get out of their truck, the dogs charged them when they got on a call. So.
I guess I would agree that we could table it, but that it comes up at the very next meeting that we have. And then in the meantime, we talk to the vet clinic and we talk to Rhonda.
Is there anybody else you think we should talk to besides those two? I mean, right now, so, so we can do that?
I'm, I'm not, uh, raising issues.
No, I just wanna make sure, so.
Yeah, those, those, those are the ones that came to my mind.
Two, two people, is that it?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe, you know, you posted the agenda on face, on the Facebook, on Lakeview announcements, maybe post the dog ordinance or make a link to it so people could check it out if they have an interest.
This is, this is basically the same ordinance we've had for, we, we upgraded it. This is, this is basically the same ordinance we've had for, we upgraded it.
We upgraded it.
To the national count. To the national count.
This is new, well, but it was new last meeting, right?
Yeah, we worked on it for six months.
Well, we've always had a dog ordinance, but we will be up, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Declaring that one as dead and gone.
Right.
After we sign this one. Not to add to Michelle's duties, it's fine if you would like.
Well, no, we just gotta drop this off at Rhonda's, right?
Um, I can, I can, I can do that.
Well, I can do that if you want. Want me to drop this off at Rhonda's?
Yeah, and I, I can, um, hit it to our website and send out a link if you would like me to do that.
Sure.
We just need to make sure that the verbiage, I mean, if Rhonda's closes down or the vet's office or whatever reason doesn't be kenneling anymore, we just need to make sure that the verbiage, you know, continues on for future. So, um, we just need to adjust it to match with what we, we have currently.
Okay, we do that, move on. Uh, the draft here, and kind of Lakeview. There are nobody here representing Little League.
Have they, um?
Just to the draft.
Have, has this been sent to them?
No, it's not. This is going through you, um, first, and then I'm gonna go over and have to Little League.
Okay.
For more changes, because it's just a draft, it's got, um.
Yeah, that's, yes.
This is pretty close to the same one we've had before. With them. And I do remember at one point that we, we talked about giving them full control, but they never came back.
Well, they wanna buy the property, they give. So they, yeah.
I think this looks pretty good.
Good, yes.
Um, I guess just take it to them and see if they have any saves. Um, if they have anything that they wanna add or take out, um, maybe, when that by us again.
We'll have it ready for the next council.
And one thing was we always have charged them a dollar a year or the charging market a dollar a year and it seemed like there was some legal reason for that. Maybe if you check that out.
Okay.
Um, I don't actually remember, but I know it was in all of our other agreements with those two entities.
Okay, I'll check it. I'll have it ready for this.
Thank you.
In, in the meantime, if you find anything, um, that you wanna add or change, let me know, so I can have it configured for.
I didn't see.
Yeah.
All right, so move on down to the resolution eleven twenty-four. Do you have a clear on certain vehicles, surplus property? We have, uh, there's four vehicles here. Sound back to Lakeview.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no comment on this.
It's, it's all vehicles that we've replaced with.
Right.
And so, and so, oh, they're rented.
Don't leave them cluttering up the lot.
Yeah.
So, so go through the auction of why over Memorial Day weekend?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any public comment? I, I would move we approve a resolution number twenty twenty-two dash eleven twenty-four, a resolution town of Lakeview declaring certain vehicles to be surplus property and indicating the intent and method for disposal of such displaced property.
Just a second.
Want to pay a second, tell them a favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, Lakeview High School banner, I'm gonna do that one because the high school student is out sick and also happens to be my child. Um, the Lakeview High School would like to, the seniors would like to hang up their banners again like they did for the last couple of years. Um, they wanna make it a traditional, um, thing for the town so that everybody could see their pictures. Right, making it nice, it's mine to graduate, but, um, they, they just really enjoyed it, so, not ready for her graduating. So, they just need approval for that.
I, I think the, um, town attorney did also want to fund these pictures.
It's a great idea.
There's their cute.
Yeah.
You okay with that, yeah? You bet?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, that's on board.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine. I, do we need a motion to do that or is it just a consent?
I think.
Yeah, consensus, yeah, you got, yeah, we're good.
Yeah. Okay, move on down, no parking, told your own expense sign on the avenue, now follow up here.
Um, so we ordered some signs because we've been having some issues with people parking in the alleyway and not leaving. Um, or having it be a temporary parking spot. Um, and there's no recourse that we can do until we have something posted.
Would you make it easier for stop to go on a queue line?
Right, yeah. There's a fire.
Or a fire truck.
Yeah, any of those.
Do, Jeff, do, do you know where those signs were created?
I, I do, I do.
Okay.
Or, nobody even has to be ordering, so.
It's okay, of course.
It's a per five per.
Oh, okay, well, then we need to order this.
We need to order this.
Okay.
I'm pressing that anytime.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, it's no parking at any time.
Yep. So it's all at your own expense, should be added on there, they, they, they.
All at your own expense.
Okay. Let's move on down to the resolution eleven twenty-five.
Um, so the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department is got their annual, uh, small, large park grants and I would like to be able to send in our application to apply for seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grants. It's, um, a highly competitive grant, we have fifty fifty chance.
What are the matching funds?
Um, there's no matching funds on that, it's seven hundred fifty thousand.
Oh, I thought I, oh, I thought I read somewhere that there was matching funds. Are you on this one? Yeah. Okay. I'm gonna, I'm sorry, next one, this one, is this the pool? Sorry, yeah. Okay, it's the next one that I was, okay, matching funds.
So this one is.
This one is good, good, pretty cool, pretty cool. Oregon Parks and Recreation. Any public comment?
Just, just a question, would, would, um, Michelle would write the, the grant for this, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand and then would the grant be subject to review by the council before it was sent? Or is the authorization today to just, she, however she writes it?
Do we wish to review it?
Never had to worry about review on her, her grant writing before, she's always done a great job at it. So why?
I believe it's identifying in the resolution exactly what we're looking for, you know, because it's saying the Lakeview swimming pool building and pool decking improvements at the Lakeview Park Pool as, you know, as the need, so I believe that that's what we're asking for. And so in the grant, I, I would assume that, I don't know that I need to look at it. I think that she could say that's the reason why. I don't see any, any words myself.
Want to make a motion?
Okay, um, I move we approve resolution number eleven twenty-five in a manner of authorizing the town of Lakeview to apply for a local government grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, upgrading the pool building and decking at Lakeview Park Pool and de, and, excuse me, delegating authority to the town manager to sign the application.
I'll second that.
Motion paid in second, tell them a favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, so let's move to the resolution eleven twenty-six.
Okay.
Um, so we've talked about this a lot before it's been approved through council. Um, we have, I have never had to do it the way that, um, we're doing it this way. Um, because we're actually needing to have council approve the resolution and then the attorney needs to write a letter of, um, authorization that he, that the town can afford the loan. And so this will go first, um, the contract will get signed, signed and then we, I will send these up to the attorney and he will send in his letter of, um, of budget that the town is able to afford it. We, I have, we've never had to do that before and I didn't know, um.
This is for the nine one one, so.
This is, yeah, that's for the.
Nine one one on the equipment and upgrade, which we pretty much, we've talked about it.
To do.
Yeah.
We do, we do, we choice, you know. Um, so, uh, we will do this and then our attorney will review and okay it or?
Um, he has to write a whole letter.
Yeah.
Um.
I don't.
Yeah, and then, then the letter will get sent along with all of this documentation to this organ. And then the, um, we'll go through, um, and then we will get our, um, amortization standard.
And, um, can you, can it, the building improvements, what course, whether it are the building improvements?
Um, part of the building improvements will need to wait, but what that have been approved is all of the tile in the training room and in the little lobby area are all water decayed, they're falling apart, they're stained. So it needs to wait until the roof gets repaired, otherwise we're just gonna keep producing the same stained tiles. But it was for the tiles and also we were wanting to do some, uh, painting on the inside as well. But most, uh, everything else was, um, computer equipment.
Right, for the nine one ones. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, yeah. Seems a lot of money. Is there any further comment?
Okay, I need a motion on that one.
I will move we approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash eleven twenty-six, a resolution authorizing town of Lakeview to obtain a loan from the Special Public Works Fund by entering into a certain special public works fund development project, financing contract and certain other required documents with the infrastructure, infrastructure finance authority of the Oregon Business Development Department. Full second.
Want to pay in second, tell them a favor?
I, yeah, I, I'm learning, there were needs to do it, yeah.
Just pay.
I need to do that one.
Resolution eleven twenty-six, budget amendment?
Just in there, I'm sorry, do you interrupt, but, um, just a point of clarification. How much is this going to be, this loan?
This loan?
Uh-huh.
Um.
I'm sorry, haven't been at your meetings.
It's on the bottom, yeah, three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, three hundred ninety-two thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so these are, uh, the next one is for some, uh, budget adjustments that we want to make to, um, move some money around. Um, so that the funds are all, um, solvent or not in the debt. It's, um, typical, typical practice. Um, and we wanna get these done, um, prior to, uh, the audit and according to the state.
Need a motion on that one?
Do you have any discussion? I move we approve resolution number eleven twenty-seven in a manner of making budget amendments for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Second that.
Motion made in second, tell them a favor?
Aye.
Okay, move on down to twenty-five thousand, um, funding for community, Lakeview community. An approval for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget line item.
Um, so I'm wanting to make sure, or have the council direct on the twenty-five thousand dollars coming out of T L T money to go towards Lakeview Community Partners. Ginger had written an email asking if we're gonna budget that again this year. Um, and I wanted to just bring it to you to see what your thoughts are, um, if you want me to go ahead and line item it. Um, it also brings, uh, to question, um, uh, the other line item that I did in the T L T funds that you'll need to figure out as well is that we, um, uh, gave thirty thousand to, uh, the roundup. So do you want me to continue to do line items like this? Or do we wanna go back to grant or do we want a more formal process? Um, the, whatever the council wishes, um, is, is what I'll do. I just wanna make sure that that's, whatever is what she sees, what I'm gonna do.
I'd like to renew that law concerning the hotel tax.
What did I have a new one written up?
Not the law, not.
Not the law, but, yeah.
Well, I'm talking about the law. I'm like, or the, because it's been about three or four years since we've actually discussed it and I kind of forgot what, what the process is for that.
What falls into that category?
Yeah, yeah, so if we can do that and then maybe discuss it at a work session or something.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
I believe, I should have looked this up before it came, but I believe that there is something, if you go to the, um, League of Oregon Cities, there's really good information there, but it seems to me that, I don't know if it's like, uh, a rule or whatever, but there's a recommendation for a process. And I believe initially, the first year it was that you all asked for a letter. The second year, I believe, and I think Dawn will remember this, there was, uh, an application, but I don't know what happened to that.
I can tell you.
Okay.
It wasn't written well, and so I'm revising it.
Okay, so I, I do think that they asked for a, a process, but I don't recall. It's probably worth, it's really worth reviewing. And that was what my question was, when I, I think you can tell and, you know, what's the process?
Yes, yeah, I saw that over the last sentence, okay.
And, and it could have changed since, um,
Well, that's.
I think it's been almost two years, it could have changed during that time, I don't know.
That's what I'd like to, for the council to review it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Make sure we're on the right.
Yeah.
Um, I'm the president, unfortunately, of, of L C P.
Lucky you. You get railroaded into that.
And, um, I've been continuing for another year, so unfortunately. But, um, I know that this is very important to us at this point in time because as you know, Ginger's leaving at the end of May and we're in the process of hiring a new, uh, director. And so we need to make sure that we, we can hire a new director and tell him what the salary is. So I really appreciate you reviewing that and hopefully putting on, putting it on your next agenda and approving it for us, it would really, it would really help us. And where the, where are your? And we're the, we're your partner and you've heard Ginger say that all the time. And we really want to, to have this partnership be transparent and good and we can move forward. We think some good things can be happening, you know? We're looking at the preferred building and that can only be a great thing to happen if something gets done through the brownfields and looking at it. So I think we can do some good things together.
I have just been.
You're not gonna say anything bad to me, are you?
What?
You're not gonna say anything bad to me, are you?
Sandy.
Get my feelings.
Not on camera. My, I have, Ginger, I have a question.
Yes.
Can I ask, why you didn't upgrade the projector instead of?
Yeah.
Because I thought if you upgraded that projector, got the newer movies, you'd have more people going, bring in more revenue. As it is now, a lot of the movies that you're showing, if somebody's got Netflix. I went home and looked on Netflix and some of those movies you're showing, I can get on Netflix.
Right, so the reason that we don't have an updated um digital projector, first of all, the cost is pretty extreme. That's one thing.
I knew that.
Yeah, but the other thing is that the contracting process with the uh studios to uh enter into agreements with them to get the, the first run movies is quite expensive. And we would have very little control over what we get. I mean, they give you a list and you can kind of choose from it and there's different levels that you can be on. But what, what ends up happening is the, they tell you when you're going to show the movies. That's one of the things that's a problem. The other one that is a problem is that first run movies are eighty percent, they get eighty percent of the ticket sales and the algebra would get twenty percent. And on the regular movies, uh, we, what we try to do is as soon as it hits the DVD, then we try to schedule it and show it. Um, that, those movies, if we streamed them, it would be a sixty forty cut. So that's why when you go to the bigger theaters and bigger towns, that's why the popcorn costs you ten dollars a bucket or whatever it is. Because that's where they make their money, that's, that's where it's at. So of course, we would probably get more people, but even if we got more people in our small theater, we've already checked it out. I've talked to our licensing people, we would probably never be able to operate in the black at all with, with that sort of thing. So we were happy that we didn't invest in it. The other thing that's going on is that the um equipment and the process and everything is changing because of what's going on with the streaming. I think we're gonna see a lot of changes in the next year. Um, you know, it's, that whole thing is changing a lot. A lot of the, the new movies, several of them have been released via streaming before they even hit the movie theaters. Especially with the Disney, the new Disney thing that came out and all of those. It looks like the studios are moving more towards that. So I don't know that we would ever get in a position. We could certainly upgrade our projector system to something that was around twenty thousand dollars, that would give us more clarity. Um, but it wouldn't help us in terms of getting first run movies.
I think COVID changed a lot of that.
It's, it totally changed it, you're absolutely right. So I don't know that we'll ever be in that position. And in some ways, I'm glad that we didn't jump and get that seventy five thousand dollar system before COVID because we would be in a pretty bad situation right now.
And Ginger, wouldn't we have to also make um upgrades to like the air conditioner and vents and?
Oh, yeah, I mean, the seventy five thousand dollars is only for the equipment. There would probably be about a thirty thousand dollar upgrade to um get a heat, or a cooling system into the projection that, uh, that would adequately take care of the heat that comes off of those um digitals.
Oh, wow.
Pardon?
Wow.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty extreme. We already have a system for the thirty five millimeter, but it's, it's like not even close to what we would need to have for the, the digital. So that's why, that's why we didn't do it. I mean, we originally thought that's what we were gonna do, we said that's what we were gonna do. But when we really got into it and found out, you know, what it was gonna cost us and what the ramifications would be for the long term, that's why we didn't do it.
Okay, council, I think I'm sorry.
Can we vote on this now? Now we're gonna.
Nothing, yeah.
Cause I need to abstain from all and vote on this. So I have conflict of interest.
Yeah.
So. I don't know.
Geez, he's sitting out there.
Jeez. So she'll, she'll watch the video.
Exactly.
So I'm not gonna hold on that.
I have a question, Ginger.
Mm-hmm.
I know that there's been a lot of talk about the cowboy poetry event.
Mm-hmm.
Can you give a, a timeline of where that's at? Are they coming, I mean, where, where's that?
What's, where is that at?
Mm-hmm.
So COVID messed with that big time, two years in a row. We thought, you know, okay, we'll skip twenty twenty and we'll do it in twenty one. And then we got gobsmacked again. So um, we are in the process of talking, we're, we're in conversation with uh Travel Southern Oregon about doing it again and we're talking about doing it in the fall. And it's going to be fairly simple. Uh, it would be probably using, trying to use the Memorial Hall as one of the venues and the theater as one, the annex as one and possibly a fourth location, but we don't know, in the central downtown area. And then see how it goes and possibly, you know, start something that could build and, and get bigger. But um, yeah, we're.
We said it was Friday night in the park down there, you know?
Right.
That was pretty cool.
Yeah.
I mean, is there a chance to start that again in the summer?
Um, if we could find sponsors to pay for the licensing, possibly.
Yeah.
If the county, you know, would allow us to do it, which I think they probably would.
How much is the uh cost to that?
The loss of licensing for each movie? It runs anywhere between two fifty and four fifty. And lately, the, the immediate uh release DVDs are three hundred a night.
And that's just for, uh, to get people from outside of Lakeview coming?
Pardon?
To get people from outside of.
We do, it depends, I mean, we don't get a lot of people from outside the area. Our, our, um, to tell you the honest truth, we're starting to get more event kinds of things going on that seem to draw more people than the movies. And uh, since COVID, our movie attendance has been really low. And we just did, and I've got a copy of it here. Um, we did a survey through Facebook that, I've got a whole packet thing here for you if you'd like. There's not much, but a little. You might be interested in seeing what our survey would be, hang out. It's kind of fun, it's on, it's in the very back and then there's some pictures here for you. Some of them you've probably seen and maybe some of them not. There you go. I think it's on the very back, this survey. It kind of gives you an idea of what people are wanting. And we've got, you know, like I said, we've got more folks that are wanting to do, we've got a concert coming up in May. The schools have really been using it. Um, we've got the dance recital is there on the twenty second and twenty third and you probably haven't seen much about that because it's been sold out for quite a while.
Yeah.
Um.
Can I get a copy of that?
The reason I'm asking council is there may be um additional opportunities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we need to decide and take advantage of that would be beneficial to you there. I mean, if they were successful.
I think one of the biggest surprises out of that, um, the uh survey was that what they really want, the, I think it was, I'd add like four or five things that they would like to see more of at the theater and that was community theater. That was number one.
Wow.
Yeah. So it would be kind of exciting to got something like that going.
Council have any other questions?
Yeah.
Need a motion on this?
I thought we were gonna wait.
Yeah, we're gonna take.
Oh, we're gonna wait, we're gonna take, that's right, we're gonna check this. We're gonna review that.
Yeah.
And you? I will say that um I attended the Brownfield meeting, Brownfields meeting, and that the other day. And it was very informative and um, I, what I see the Brownfields doing is doing all the groundwork for improvements for the, you know, for the community and I think that's very important to have happen.
Okay, well, I'll get, I'll get back to the council with a review for the T L T. Um, and um, I'll have it on our next agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, last item on there. Oh, I take that back. Uh, the cameras bullet can yard range, those uh, there's only two of us, no wriggles in the yard. So hopefully we'll, we'll catch whoever's up in guard. Um, any more public comments? Okay, move on down, we, everybody got any other matters?
Um, you know, the other day, and I was gonna talk to you about this Jeff, is that there on the corner of South Fifth and H, the handicap on the school side, that, that needs to be repaired because I saw a gentleman trying to go down it with his walker and he had a way difficult time because.
Was that the pre-mont?
By pre-mont.
Yes, I, it is.
Mentioned that.
Fifth and H.
Fifth and H, yeah, and the pre-mont.
Right.
And that, and it's just crumbling, it was crumbling and he, and he.
The one right on the school corner itself.
Right, and it's a telephone pole right in the middle, you know?
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't help, doesn't help, but, but it's, but I just, you know, when I saw this gentleman trying to get down, I go, this.
And then the, the service is crumbling?
Yeah, and then it's not a smooth ramp, it's like, there's probably a good two inch, one inch, two inch drop, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's not inter-.
We'll look at.
It could, you know, accessible.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
We put a one catty corner over there last year.
Right, yeah, right, and that, but yeah, but it just, I, it just, right. Any more here?
Uh, any of the staff have any comments? Nope, I'm good. Okay, that's good. Council, do you have any more comments? Okay, then we'll return to me at six oh four.